Trustee Newell.
Present.
Trustee Palafas.
Present.
Trustee Stanton.
Present.
Trustee Gata.
Present.
Trustee Arnett.
Present.
Trustee Mills.
Present.
Mayor McLeod.
Present. Trustee Newell, can you lead us in the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Okay, President's Report. We do have a proclamation, Madam Clerk?
And I get to read it. Office of the Mayor proclamation, whereas America's progress has been driven by pioneers who think big, take risks, and work hard. And whereas from the storefront shops that anchor Main Street and the high-tech startups that keep America on the cutting edge, small businesses are the backbone of our economy and the cornerstones of our nation's promise. And whereas small business owners and Main Street businesses have energy and a passion for what they do. And whereas when we support small business, jobs are created and local communities preserve their unique culture. And whereas because this country's 30 million small businesses create nearly two out of three jobs in our economy, we cannot resolve ourselves to create jobs and spur economic growth in America without discussing ways to support our entrepreneurs. And whereas the President of the United States has proclaimed National Small Business Week every year since 1963 to highlight the programs and services available to entrepreneurs through the U.S. Small Business Administration and other government agencies. And whereas Hoffman Estates, Illinois supports and joins in this national effort to help America's small businesses do what they do best, grow their businesses, create jobs, and ensure that our communities remain as vibrant tomorrow as they are today. Be it therefore resolved that William D. McLeod, acting under and by virtue of the authority vested in him by the Constitution of the State of Illinois and laws of this village of Hoffman Estates, hereby proclaims April 29th through May 5th, 2018, as National Small Business Week in the Village of Hoffman Estates, and urges all Hoffman Estates residents and businesses to join in its observance.
Chair will accept a motion.
So moved.
Second.
Motion is second. We appreciate the, all the jobs and the services that our small businesses provide to us. They provide a lot of economic activity for us. All those in favor say aye.
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 Poo.
Roll call.
Roll call, roll call. Yes.
Trustee Palafas.
Aye.
Trustee Newell.
Aye.
Trustee Stanton.
Aye.
Trustee Gata.
Aye.
Trustee Arnett.
Aye.
Trustee Mills.
Aye.
Mayor McLeod.
Aye, motion carried. I'll do a road trip and get this to the chamber tomorrow. Okay, we have a couple of resignations. Robert Borchak from the Historical Sites Commission. Chair will accept a motion.
So moved with regrets.
Second.
It's a motion is second. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
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 Poo, the ayes have a motion carried. Oh, we have to do that road call on everything.
Trustee Palafas.
Aye.
Trustee Newell.
Aye.
Trustee Stanton.
Aye.
Trustee Gata.
Aye.
Trustee Arnett.
Aye.
Trustee Mills.
Aye.
Mayor McLeod.
Aye, motion carried. Resignation from the Senior Commission of Kevin Carnahan. It's a big loss. Is there a motion?
Move to, uh, so moved with regret.
It's a motion is second. Any discussion? Seeing none, can you pull the board, Madam Clerk?
Trustee Palafas.
Aye.
Trustee Newell.
Aye.
Trustee Stanton.
Aye.
Trustee Gata.
Aye.
Trustee Arnett.
Aye.
Trustee Mills.
Aye.
Mayor McLeod.
Aye, motion carried. We did an interview this evening, Arnaud Manier for the Sister Cities Commission. Chair will accept a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Motion is second. Any discussion? Seeing none, can you call the roll, Madam Clerk?
Trustee Palafas.
Aye.
Trustee Newell.
Aye.
Trustee Stanton.
Aye.
Trustee Gata.
Aye.
Trustee Arnett.
Aye.
Trustee Mills.
Aye.
Mayor McLeod.
Aye, motion carried. Happy birthday to, in a little in advance, for Trustee Arnett. It's coming up in a couple of weeks.
Thank you.
Wednesday, April 25th, we have Wine Wednesday at the Poplar Creek Bowl on Higgins from 5:30 to 7:30. They renovated the space, so come on, check it out. Thursday, April 26th, we have the Chambers Annual Bon Appetit Food and Drink Festival at the Stone Gate, starting at 5:00 PM. So, that's always a great event, great food, wonderful. And Arbor Day, we're celebrating with Whitley School again this year at Arbor Day Park, Arbor Park, rather, at 10:00 AM, Downing and Sumac Trail. Also, through the Metropolitan Water Reclamation District, there is, the MWRD is offering free trees to residents cook on regardless of whether they're in the MWRD service area, which we are. Every Wednesday morning between 9:00 AM and 12:00 noon, people can pick up a bur oak, pin oak, or in a swamp, white oak at any of the MWRD's six water reclamation plants, plants, Calumet in Chicago, Egan in Schaumburg, it's right on Martin Gale Road, Hannover Park, Kiering in the Plains, O'Brien and Skokie or Stickney. The trees are available either bare-rooted or potted, so we can always use more trees in Hoffman Estates, there's no question about that. Okay, in the last week, we, we had the Village Green Ad-Hoc Committee meeting last Tuesday. And Tuesday evening, we had a very moving Holocaust remembrance event with the survivor of the concentration camp. Wednesday, I participated in the Legislative Committee of the Northwest Municipal Conference, and we had the April Showers Luncheon for the senior citizens here in the Hennessy Room. And Chamber Business After Hours was at Fabrinis, it was a very well-attended event. And on Wednesday evening, I attended the Northwest Municipal Conference meeting. Thursday, April 19th, we had the Pension Fairness Coalition Call. On Saturday, we had coffee with the Board, which I had to leave early for my nephew's wedding, but the trustees, as I understand, did a great job and answered everybody's questions. And that evening, several of us attended the welcome home party for Jared Tomaszewski at the Chandler's, which was a very, very moving event, and all his brothers had served in the Air Force also. Today, we had a dear graduation at Whitley School, and we had Trustee Arnett's birthday dinner. And that's all I have. Village Manager's Report. What do you got, Village Manager?
Actually, it's the General Manager of the Arena and myself are bringing forward this item. On April 14th, the PA system at the Arena failed. The staff there was able to make some quick temporary repairs, but obviously, when you're running as many events as Mr. Gibbs and his staff have been running and will be running, including graduations coming up very shortly, we had to get it fixed. And given the number of events we have now on the weekends, a lot of these repairs that come up are going to have to take place this way, because they have to get done within a limited timeframe. So, Mr. Gibbs went out and got quick quotes to do the repair and to inspect the system, and we're asking the Board to ratify repairs of $85,689 that was, is going to be paid to Visua Corporation of La Crosse, Wisconsin. If you have any questions, Ben can answer them.
Chair would accept a motion.
So moved.
Second.
Motion is second. Any questions for Ben?
I only have one. Is there a warranty with that? Once the repair, like 90 days a year?
There's a two-year warranty on some of the parts, yeah.
Okay.
A little bit more detail. The digital processor is what failed. It's actually one of the more robust components in the entire system. More than likely, other components go down before this would. So the fact that this went down is somewhat of an anomaly. The system, albeit 12 years old, is in really good shape. System gets used for graduations, but usually tenant events, because we've had kind of sporadic tenant content. The speakers, the amps, everything's in really good shape despite its age. We get inspected every year, and really, there was no inkling that there was going to be a problem. In fact, some piece systems last 20 years. Now, that's not the norm, but we thought, given the, you know, irregular use, we were going to get lucky. And during inspections, there just wasn't stuff failing on a regular basis that would give us pause. So, we think there was some sort of electrical event. And we don't think it was a lightning strike, or at least we haven't been, we haven't been able to track that down, but something fairly catastrophic happening melted down what is the brain of the system. It's a single point of failure, and once it goes, you don't have many options, but it's such a robust piece of equipment, usually that's not a concern for most buildings. In the new installation, we're obviously replacing it with more advanced technology. It will be rewired, so if a single component goes down, it will have fail safes and will have backups. The way it was wired in this case, once one component went down, everything kind of dominoed from there. So, the system will be more reliable, and frankly, we had to upgrade some other things because of the electrical issue. It'll sound better, it'll be more up to date, and frankly, I think it'll buy us a couple more years where we don't have to worry about it. But this was not something we anticipated, nor would most folks, knowing that everything else was in such good shape. So, I don't know if it was bad luck, or there was a lightning strike, or something happened in that room that we'll never be able to track, but it was a surprise and literally died 30 minutes after we opened doors for the event. Fine all day, fine all day, tested it, tested it, and then 30 minutes started acting a little bit weird. We went up to the room to check it out. The component was kind of power cycling, power cycling, trying to keep itself on. And then, once we tried to kind of give it a hard reset, it was just like, oop, we're done here. So that point, when I called the tech, he said, no, there's no way it's that piece. That's the last thing we go. Sure, it's something much more innocuous, and sure enough, when he came on site a day later, he said, this is completely dead. So, a little bit of bad luck, but we've had mostly good luck with components like this. I don't think this is, I think this is the first time we've had an emergency repair of this nature to a kind of critical system. So, hopefully, this is ours for the next decade. But this component will last at least 10 years, if not more. So, it's, that's the one upside to it.
That's the cost of doing business.
Mm-hmm.
There's a motion is second. Yes, Trustee Mills.
Now, we're replacing six of the amplifiers. The other ones, you don't expect those to go down once those are?
Listen, I never say I don't expect, but they're all working, frankly. There were six that were giving us issues last year. They're still working. We made some minor repairs. After the electrical vent, I stopped trusting those six, because they had already kind of shown signs of failure. So rather than just fix one thing and go, all right, these other six are kind of acting up, we said, you know what, let's get the six out of the way that really are kind of behaving, and then at least we know going into graduations where we have 11 days straight. We're not going to have bolt, what we don't want is every time an amp fails, we lose a cluster of speakers, which means a whole section of people can't hear. We want to avoid that. So, the good news is, we're going to go into graduations with high confidence that the system's in great shape and that there shouldn't be any gremlins left in the system. But, I don't know, it's unfortunate, because it certainly was not on our list for five years. Just because how the system was aging well and showing that it was very well-maintained, and just one of those things.
Thank you.
I got a question.
Trustee Stanton.
Ben, what's the timeframe on the repairs?
So, we're up and running now. So, as of last Friday, they at least were able to get the audio to work in its most basic form, like we can do public address announcements, life safety announcements. They're back here tomorrow to do the actual digital coding, to put all the necessary kind of programs into place that allows us to kind of do more sophisticated things with the system. So it's working in terms of we can pump out sound through all the speakers. By the end of the week, it'll work as we had before. But with the better technology, the sound quality will be better, and we'll actually have more flexibility to do more stuff with the system. Before, it was kind of limited in how many things we could do. So, it'll be better, which is good. And then, I would then put together a plan to phase in the rest of the new amplifiers. So in the next six to seven years, we'd have a completely new system, which, you know, I think would last us another 12, 20 years, probably. But the amps are good, it's just those six were acting up. And if we did get a lightning strike or something happened in that room, it's those six that were vulnerable to begin with. So, I don't want to take a chance.
All right, that was a long answer.
No, it's, it's an expensive fix, so I figure, you know, it deserves an explanation. I was shocked.
All she needed to say was one day or two days.
I never should have asked that. I thought it was just like a stereo. We just unplug something, plug something back in, and then he goes.
And play.
Yeah. I was like, I gotta, stereo my car, it works pretty good, you know.
Mike, did you have a question too over there?
No, that's the question I was going to ask, the same.
Okay, and any other questions? Seeing none, can you pull the board, Madam Clerk?
Trustee Palafas.
Aye.
Trustee Newell.
Aye.
Trustee Stanton.
Aye.
Trustee Gata.
Aye.
Trustee Arnett.
Aye.
Trustee Mills.
Aye.
Mayor McLeod.
Aye, motion carried. Move on to four, Planning and Zoning Commission reports. Chairperson Combs, how are you?
I'm fine, how are you?
Great, thanks.
Planning and Zoning Commission recommended for approval a request by Honke Real Estate LLC owner and Leopardo Companies, Inc. applicant for a building expansion and parking lot expansion at Celicia Flavors 5250 Prairie Stone Parkway with three conditions, voting with seven a's for absent.
Chair will accept a motion?
So moved.
Second.
It's a motion is second. Any questions on this?
How many extra, yeah, I do, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
How many extra parking spaces are there going to be?
I think it was, what, 21 or something?
24.
24.
Okay.
You guys want to identify yourself for the record, who you represent, and?
Good evening. Mike Marachek with Leopardo Companies.
Okay.
And I guess I should ask another question following up. How long do you expect this to take?
For the complete construction, we're showing a six-month schedule.
Starting around May, if you can?
Hopefully, this week, next week.
Okay. Great.
Any other questions? Seeing no other questions, can you call the roll, Madam Clerk?
Trustee Palafas.
Aye.
Trustee Newell.
Aye.
Trustee Stanton.
Aye.
Trustee Gata.
Aye.
Trustee Arnett.
Aye.
Trustee Mills.
Aye.
Mayor McLeod.
Aye, motion carried. Thank you, good luck. Chair will accept a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
It's a motion is second.
Oh, wait a minute, we can't. Don't we need a roll call?
Yeah, we get a roll call.
We need a?
Sorry.
It's a motion to adjourn.
That was just a motion.
Yeah.
Oh, okay. So moved.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay. Can you call the roll, Madam Clerk?
Trustee Palafas.
Aye.
Trustee Sta, I'm sorry, Trustee Newell.
Aye.
Trustee Stanton.
She almost forgot you there, Anna. Aye.
Trustee Gata.
Aye.
Trustee Arnett.
Aye.
Trustee Mills.
Aye.
Mayor McLeod.
Aye, motion carried. We are adjourned from the board meeting. And the clerk can go home. Just not fair. Have a good night. Goodbye, goodbye, goodbye.
I'd like to call to order the Public Health and Safety Committee in Village of Hoffman Estates on April 23rd, 2018. May I have a roll call, please?
Chairman Gata.
Present.
Vice Chairman Palafas.
Present.
Trustee Newell.
Present.
Trustee Mills.
Present.
Trustee Stanton.
Present.
Trustee Arnett.
Present.
Mayor McLeod.
Present.
Thank you, and we have a quorum. Number two, approval of minutes of March 26, 2018.
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion in a second. Any corrections, deletions? May we have a roll call, please?
Trustee Palafas.
Aye.
Chairman Gata.
Yes, present.
Aye.
Trustee Newell.
Aye.
Aye.
Trustee Mills.
Aye.
Trustee Stanton.
Aye.
Trustee Arnett.
Aye.
Mayor McLeod.
Aye.
And we have a quorum. No. Yeah, approval of the minutes. I just went blank for a minute on that.
So moved.
Under new business, request board approval of a resolution creating the commission for people with disabilities. I need a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Any questions on the Board? Seeing none, may I have a roll call, please?
Vice Chairman Palafas.
Aye.
Chairman Gata.
Aye.
Trustee Newell.
Aye.
Trustee Mills.
Aye.
Trustee Stanton.
Aye.
Trustee Arnett.
Aye.
Mayor McLeod.
Aye.
Thank you, and we have approval. Number two, request authorization to waive bidding and purchase seven Ford Explorer Interceptor utility vehicles from Kerry Motors, Frankfurt, Illinois, low bidder, in an amount not to exceed $202,489.
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion in a second. Any questions here? Any questions there, sir?
No, sir. This is just a request for our annual frontline vehicle replacement program.
And what do we do with the ones that we're replacing?
They get passed down to other divisions within the Police Department, other sections. And then, some of them get auctioned off, and others go to different Village departments.
Okay, very good. Seeing none, we have a roll call, please.
Vice Chairman Palafas.
Aye.
Chairman Gata.
Aye.
Trustee Newell.
Aye.
Trustee Mills.
Aye.
Trustee Stanton.
Aye.
Trustee Arnett.
Aye.
Mayor McLeod.
Aye.
And we have approval. Thank you. Number three, request authorization to waive bidding on purchase of Meiko model B A M 06 H E 3 breathing air module compressor from Air One Equipment Incorporated, South Elgin, Illinois, in the amount of $43,285. Need a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Motion in a second. What would you like to add to that, Chief?
It's the replacement of our air compressor. The current system we have in place at Station 22 is greater than 20 years old, had a life expectancy of 15 years. We were able to keep it going the additional six-plus years, almost. It's now at a point where it's starting to fail quite regularly. Repairs have increased to a point where repairing is not the most logical. There we go.
And what station is that at?
It's going to be at Station 22 on Mon Lake.
22?
Yes.
Any questions from the Board? Seeing none, may I have a roll call, please?
Vice Chairman Palafas.
Aye.
Chairman Gata.
Aye.
Trustee Newell.
Aye.
Trustee Mills.
Aye.
Trustee Stanton.
Aye.
Trustee Arnett.
Aye.
Mayor McLeod.
Aye.
Thank you, motion approved. Number four, request authorization to waive bidding and purchase structural firefighting clothing as follows. A, seven sets of structural firefighting clothing to M E S Dash, Illinois, Dill Creek, Illinois, sole source vendor, in an amount not to exceed $18,165. And B, nine sets of structural firefighting clothing to Air One Equipment, South Elgin, Illinois, sole source vendor, in an amount not to exceed $23,805. I have a motion?
So moved. Second.
I have a motion in a second. Any questions up here? Chief?
This is our annual replacement program for protective clothing for firefighters. It's their structural firefighting gear. The gear is replaced annually based on need, whether or not it's age or wear and tear. We use two different vendors based on size and fit for the individuals.
And what do we do with the other clothing?
If it's still, we put it out to auction. We just had an approval last month to allow to start offering and selling to other communities within Illinois. So we just recently sold 25 sets.
Oh, very good.
I believe, to a town in southern Illinois. So this will go down that same path.
Good. Seeing no questions, we have a roll call, please.
Vice Chairman Palafas.
Aye.
Chairman Gata.
Aye.
Trustee Newell.
Aye.
Trustee Mills.
Aye.
Trustee Stanton.
Aye.
Trustee Arnett.
Present.
Mayor McLeod. Mayor McLeod.
Thank you, motion passed. Five, request acceptance of the Police Department monthly report.
So moved.
Second.
And in a second. Chief, what would you like to add to that?
Nothing to add, sir.
Nothing to add? Seeing anything up here? Nothing? Then we have a roll call, please.
Vice Chairman Palafas.
Aye.
Chairman Gata.
Aye.
Trustee Newell.
Aye.
Trustee Mills.
Aye.
Trustee Stanton.
Aye.
Trustee Arnett.
Aye.
Mayor McLeod.
Aye.
Thank you, motion approved. Number six, request acceptance of the Health Human Services monthly report.
So moved.
I have a motion in a second. Any questions up here? Dr. Savidra, nothing to add. May I have a roll call, please?
Vice Chairman Palafas.
Aye.
Chairman Gata.
Aye.
Trustee Newell.
Aye.
Trustee Mills.
Aye.
Trustee Stanton.
Aye.
Trustee Arnett.
Aye.
Mayor McLeod.
Aye.
Thank you, and that's approved. Number seven, request acceptance of Emergency Management Coordinator monthly report.
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion in a second. Any questions? Seeing none, call the roll, please.
Vice Chairman Palafas.
Aye.
Chairman Gata.
Aye.
Trustee Newell.
Aye.
Trustee Mills.
Aye.
Trustee Stanton.
Aye.
Trustee Arnett.
Aye.
Mayor McLeod.
Aye.
Thank you, motion approved. And number eight, request acceptance of the Fire Department monthly report.
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion in a second. Any questions up here? Chief, is there something that you would like to add?
Nothing to report at this time.
Nothing, but I would. I don't know exactly what took place, but I'd just like to read a couple letters from sixth-grade students from Eisenhower Junior High. Says, Dear firefighters, thank you for serving our community. You risk your life day in and day out when you receive a call. I'm a student at Eisenhower Junior High, and I look up to every single one of you because of your fearless attitudes. I hope you never feel underappreciated and neglected, and you're super brave and too good, and too good for that. I hope you have a great day. Remember to always find something to laugh about. Thank you. Sincerely, yours, Maya. Seventh-grade student from Eisenhower. And I'd just like to read one more. There's like six of them here. We're not going to take this much time. This is another one from the same school seventh grader. Dear Hoffman Estates Fire Department, I am a student at Eisenhower Junior High School. I just want to take a moment to thank you for everything you do for our community. Without you, our community would be unsafe and disastrous. Thank you for keeping us safe when accidents and fires happen. Sincerely, Allison. Thank you. And especially for little kids like this here, or junior high school, right? They get a chance to appreciate what all of you do, Police Department as well as the Fire Department.
This was, that was, those letters came from the school based on a public safety awareness campaign that they were doing in the school district.
Oh, okay. So that's how this came about for it. Well, thank you, and thank you, all of the firemen. President's report?
Nothing else, Trustee Gata.
Nothing and other? Nothing? Items in review? Looking for an adjournment?
So moved.
Second.
Motion and a second. And we have a roll call, please.
Vice Chairman Palafas?
Aye.
Chairman Gata?
Aye.
Trustee Newell?
Aye.
Trustee Mills?
Aye.
Trustee Stanton?
Aye.
Trustee Arnett?
Aye.
Mayor McLeod?
Aye.
Thank you. We are adjourned.
Okay, I would like to call the Finance Committee for April 23, 2018, to order. May I have a roll call, please?
Chairperson Palafas?
President.
Vice Chairperson Newell?
Present.
Trustee Gata?
Present.
Trustee Mills?
Present.
Trustee Stanton?
Present.
Trustee Arnett?
Present.
Mayor McLeod?
Present.
Okay, everyone accounted for, and we have a quorum. The next item would be the approval of minutes from March 26, 2018.
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Seeing no additions or corrections, may I have a roll call, please?
Chairperson Palafas?
Aye.
Vice Chairperson Newell?
Aye.
Trustee Gata?
Aye.
Trustee Mills?
Aye.
Trustee Stanton?
Aye.
Trustee Arnett?
Aye.
Mayor McLeod?
Aye.
Motion passed. Under new business, we have four items. The first item is request authorization to renew the Microsoft Enterprise Licensing Agreement negotiated through CDW Government Incorporated, which is the Microsoft Large Account Reseller statewide master contract under CMS 6945110 for a period of three years at a total cost of $300,350.70 with annual payments of $100,116.90 made in 2018, 2019, and 2020.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. And Mr. Beston Hoffer, would you like to add anything?
These are just the annual renewals for the subscriptions and the licenses.
Thank you. Any questions up here? Okay, we have a motion and a second. May I have a roll call, please?
Chairperson Palafas?
Aye.
Vice Chairperson Newell?
Aye.
Trustee Gata?
Aye.
Trustee Mills?
Aye.
Trustee Stanton?
Aye.
Trustee Arnett?
Aye.
Mayor McLeod?
Aye.
Okay, no nays. Motion passed. Item number two is request acceptance of Finance Department monthly report.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Do we have anything to add? Nothing to add? No questions? We have a motion and a second. May I have a roll call, please?
Chairperson Palafas?
Aye.
Vice Chairperson Newell?
Aye.
Trustee Gata?
Aye.
Trustee Mills?
Aye.
Trustee Stanton?
Aye.
Trustee Arnett?
Aye.
Mayor McLeod?
Aye.
Motion passed. Item number four, request acceptance of Sears Center monthly report.
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Anything to add?
Nothing to add.
Nothing to add? Okay, thank you. May I have a roll call, please?
Chairperson Palafas?
Aye.
Vice Chairperson Newell?
Aye.
Trustee Gata?
Aye.
Trustee Mills?
Aye.
Trustee Stanton?
Aye.
Trustee Arnett?
Aye.
Mayor McLeod?
Aye.
Motion passed. Item number four, request acceptance of Sears Center monthly report.
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Anything to add?
Nothing to add.
Nothing to add? Okay, thank you. May I have a roll call, please?
Chairperson Palafas?
Aye.
Vice Chairperson Newell?
Aye.
Trustee Gata?
Aye.
Trustee Mills?
Aye.
Trustee Stanton?
Aye.
Trustee Arnett?
Aye.
Mayor McLeod?
Aye.
Motion passed. President's report?
Nothing else, Trustee.
Thank you. Nothing under other items in review? May I have a motion to adjourn, please?
So moved.
Second.
A second, may I have a roll call, please?
Chairperson Palafas?
Aye.
Vice Chairperson Newell?
Aye.
Trustee Gata?
Aye.
Trustee Mills?
Aye.
Trustee Stanton?
Aye.
Trustee Arnett?
Aye.
Mayor McLeod?
Aye.
Motion passed. President's report?
Nothing else, Trustee.
Thank you. Nothing under other items in review? May I have a motion to adjourn, please?
So moved.
Second.
A second, may I have a roll call, please?
Chairperson Palafas?
Aye.
Vice Chairperson Newell?
Aye.
Trustee Gata?
Aye.
Trustee Mills?
Aye.
Trustee Stanton?
Aye.
Trustee Arnett?
Aye.
Mayor McLeod?
Aye.
Motion passed. And the last set of minutes was for April 23, 2018, which was a special meeting.
So moved.
Second.
Motion and a second. No additions or corrections. May I have a roll call, please?
Trustee Palafas?
Aye.
Chairperson Newell?
Aye.
Vice Chairperson Gata?
Aye.
Trustee Mills?
Aye.
Trustee Stanton?
Aye.
Trustee Arnett?
Aye.
Mayor McLeod?
Aye.
Motion passed. Item number three, request acceptance of Information System Department monthly report.
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Do we have anything to add? Nothing to add? No questions? We have a motion and a second. May I have a roll call, please?
Chairperson Palafas?
Aye.
Vice Chairperson Newell?
Aye.
Trustee Gata?
Aye.
Trustee Mills?
Aye.
Trustee Stanton?
Aye.
Trustee Arnett?
Aye.
Mayor McLeod?
Aye.
Motion passed. Item number three, request acceptance of Information System Department monthly report.
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Anything to add?
Nothing to add.
Nothing to add? Okay, thank you. May I have a roll call, please?
Chairperson Palafas?
Aye.
Vice Chairperson Newell?
Aye.
Trustee Gata?
Aye.
Trustee Mills?
Aye.
Trustee Stanton?
Aye.
Trustee Arnett?
Aye.
Mayor McLeod?
Aye.
Motion passed. President's report?
Nothing else, Trustee.
Thank you. Nothing under other items in review? May I have a motion to adjourn, please?
So moved.
Second.
A second, may I have a roll call, please?
Chairperson Palafas?
Aye.
Vice Chairperson Newell?
Aye.
Trustee Gata?
Aye.
Trustee Mills?
Aye.
Trustee Stanton?
Aye.
Trustee Arnett?
Aye.
Mayor McLeod?
Aye.
Passed, we are adjourned. I would like to call the Public Work and Utility Committee to order for April 23. May I have a roll call, please?
Chairperson Newell?
Present.
Vice Chairperson Gata?
Present.
Trustee Palafas?
President.
Trustee Mills?
Present.
Trustee Stanton?
Present.
Trustee Arnett?
Present.
Mayor McLeod?
Present.
Okay, we have a quorum. Under approval of minutes, we have three sets of minutes. The first one is for March 26, 2018.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any corrections, additions? Seeing none, may I have a roll call, please?
Trustee Palafas?
Aye.
Chairperson Newell?
Aye.
Vice Chairperson Gata?
Aye.
Trustee Mills?
Aye.
Trustee Stanton?
Aye.
Trustee Arnett?
Aye.
Mayor McLeod?
Aye.
Motion passed. The next set of minutes was for the March 19, 2018, which was a special meeting.
So moved.
Second.
Motion and a second. No additions or corrections. May I have a roll call, please?
Trustee Palafas?
Aye.
Chairperson Newell?
Aye.
Vice Chairperson Gata?
Aye.
Trustee Mills?
Aye.
Trustee Stanton?
Aye.
Trustee Arnett?
Aye.
Mayor McLeod?
Aye.
Motion passed. And the last set of minutes was for April 2, 2018, which was a special meeting also.
So moved. Second.
I have a motion and a second. Seeing no corrections, additions. May I have a roll call, please?
Trustee Palafas?
Aye.
Chairperson Newell?
Aye.
Vice Chairperson Gata?
Aye.
Trustee Mills?
Aye.
Trustee Stanton?
Aye.
Trustee Arnett?
Aye.
Mayor McLeod?
Aye.
Okay, motion passed. Under new business, we have nine items. The first item is discussion regarding Tree City USA recognition.
This is, we just want to bring this to the board every year that we get it, which luckily we've been able to get it for over 20 years in a row. This year, we actually received, or actually it was for 2017, we actually also received not just the recognition as a Tree City, but also the Growth Award. We received it originally, or we've received it a number of times. We did receive it in 2014. We also received it in 2017, which is, it's a higher level of recognition for practices that we do related to forestry and trees. This year, we won it for a number of items, or for 2017, we won it for a number of items. The biggest was, we acquired a stump grinder to provide much quicker customer service to our residents. We had identified an area, when we hired a contractor, we were waiting till we had a large number of stumps to grind before we'd bring the contractor in. Now that we have it, we're able to, once we remove a tree, we're able to get back to that location very quickly, grind the stump. We carry on with the restoration if they get a new planting or whatever, so we're able to speed that process up much faster. Also, the Earth Day event that occurred last year, we had some participation from some area businesses that helped clean up and beautify Arbor Park, which turned out to be very successful last year, so we were recognized for that.
And then this was the fifth time we received the Growth Award, correct?
Correct.
That's awesome. Okay, congrats, and thank you for everything on that one. Moving on to item number two is request approval of an ordinance declaring village property surplus and permitting the sale of personal property owned by the village.
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any questions? Seeing none, may I have a roll call, please?
Trustee Palafas?
Aye.
Chairperson Newell?
Aye.
Vice Chairperson Gata?
Aye.
Trustee Mills?
Aye.
Trustee Stanton?
Aye.
Trustee Arnett?
Aye.
Mayor McLeod?
Aye.
Motion passed. God bless you. Item number three, request approval of ordinances authorizing the village to borrow funds from the State of Illinois Public Water Supply Loan Program and State of Illinois Water Pollution Control Loan Program for the following projects. A, repainting of Stonington Boulevard Tower, which is the T2, and Huntington Boulevard Tower, T4, $700,000. B, rehabilitation of Chippendale Lift Station and rebuilding of the Gulf Road Sanitary Sewer Lift Station for $2 million.
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Do we have any questions? Do we have anything to add?
Why don't they explain, and I'll have questions?
So, the State of Illinois, through the IEPA, offers periodically low-interest revolving loan fund for eligible water and sometimes sewer, sanitary sewer projects. The interest rates are actually better than rates we can get bonding, so we identified some projects that were higher-dollar projects that desperately needed to be done in the next three- to four-year period, and we went through the process. You'll remember that we hired an engineer actually to prepare these grant applications, and we were notified that we were successful in, not grant applications, loan applications, and we were successful. So we are gonna, as you'll see, item number four is related to that, and that's actually beginning the engineering work so we can move on these projects.
Yeah, I saw that. I've got questions about that, too, but, go ahead.
The items that we're looking for the loans for have been in the CIP for a number of years, and they're, you know, we are marching towards having to fund them anyway. We did go down the process of pursuing State of Illinois loans because the interest rates were so attractive, as opposed to bonds.
All right, number one, we want to get this work done this year. Is that the idea? No?
No. The loan process, the State of Illinois loan process takes 12 to 18 months, so we're a good halfway through that process. We're looking, the construction schedule, we're looking to do construction in 2019. As far as the tower, the water tower repainting, we have a window in the spring and a window in the fall that we can do paint towers. We don't want to take a tower down in the middle of summer when we have high water usage, and you can't yet, it has to be over 40 degrees before they can put paint on. So we have a window in spring and a window in fall, so we'd probably be looking at spring or fall of 2019 for those projects.
When we take the loan, we're gonna be obviously making a payment. The payment, at least for the first year, on $2 million is $35,200 per year, and obviously that goes down as we make payments, but there's nothing here that shows me how much we're gonna be paying in interest on that $2 million over that 20-year period.
So, Trustee Stanton, we had the ability to either bond for these projects or do the loans. When we figured the water rate, we figured it one time. That would either be bond or loan, but we used the bond rate. We have the money available in the water rate in order to be able to pay the debt service, whether it was debt service or bonds or the annual loan payments. We have the money available to do it.
You mean we have the money now available to do it?
Well, we have it programmed as we sell water and collect rates. The loans will all be due in one year.
Right.
So, we project out from the time that we know we're going to issue debt. On the bonds, we know the number of years of debt service payment. Same thing on the loans, bonds are actually longer. So, but we projected out using potentially what the bonds would be. So, we have, if you will, the margin because the water rate includes your operating costs, your debt cost, which alone is big, and your supply costs, like our cost to buy the water from Jawa. We factored this in when we worked on the water rates, just like we factor the bonds in.
These projects were included in the water rate study that they did a couple of years ago when they did the water rate.
Right.
Okay, would the money, is there funds in the capital improvement fund to do this next year?
So, the water fund makes contributions to the water fund. There will be enough money in the fund at the time the debt service payment is due, yes.
Okay, I mean, one of the things that also bothers me is the language that we have in this ordinance. It says, whereas the estimated cost of construction installation of the project excluding engineering, legal, financial, and other related expenses is, it depends on which ordinance you're looking at, it's either $2 million or $700,000, and there are insufficient funds on hand and lawfully available to pay these costs. I mean, technically, we have funds on hand to pay for these costs, and making this kind of a statement to me is...
We don't have $2.7 million on hand at the time of application.
Well, we do in the general fund.
General fund can't pay water and sewer, has to come out of the enterprise fund.
Okay.
So, your water and sewer fund does not have the ability to make that payment.
I understand, okay. That makes more sense to me, though. And the one loan is for 12 years and the other is for 20 years. The $700,000 is for 12, is that, that's what it reads on the ordinance at least?
Right.
Okay. And it's the same amount of interest?
It's lesser than the bond.
No, no, I mean for the two.
Yes, yes, yes.
That's 1.76 percent.
Correct.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, seeing none, this is approval for A and B item. We have a motion is second. May I have a roll call, please?
Trustee Polofis.
Aye.
Chairperson Newell.
Aye.
Vice Chairperson Gata.
Aye.
Trustee Mills.
Aye.
Trustee Stanton.
I was going to say nay, but I will say aye now.
Trustee Arnett.
Aye.
Mayor McLeod.
Aye.
Okay, motion passed. Item number four, request authorization to waive bidding process and award contract for engineering services for Gulf Road Sanitary Sewer Lift Station replacement design and construction management to Baxter and Woodman Consulting Engineers out of Crystal Lake, Illinois in an amount not to exceed $196,825.
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion and a second.
The question I have for this one is, out of the loans that we are getting to pay for the other projects, is that also paying for this $196,825?
It's reimbursable by the loan, correct?
Okay.
Anything else? We have a motion and a second. May I have a roll call, please?
Trustee Polofis.
Aye.
Chairperson Newell.
Aye.
Vice Chairperson Gata.
Aye.
Trustee Mills.
Aye.
Trustee Stanton.
Aye.
Trustee Arnett.
Aye.
Mayor McLeod.
Aye.
Motion passed. Item number five, request approval of the locations for the 2018 Drainage Improvement Project and discussion of the village drainage policy.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion is second. Mr. Wonderski, would you like to fill them in on that real quick?
Yes, so this would be requesting approval of the annual locations for the annual drainage project that is included in the CIP. The last sheet of the item is the locations list. The locations that we're requesting to be included in the project are the ones highlighted in yellow. On there, the locations that are highlighted in green are already included in, were included in the 2018 CIP under separate items, so we're not looking for any approval of those locations right now. The current drainage project list is based on the drainage policy that was last approved in 2016 and has been unchanged since then. And both the drainage policy and the drainage locations that are being requested for approval were discussed at the April Stormwater Management Committee and recommended to be brought to this committee for approval as you see them today.
Any questions? Seeing none, we have a motion is second. May I have a roll call, please?
Trustee Polofis.
Aye.
Chairperson Newell.
Aye.
Vice Chairperson Gata.
Aye.
Trustee Mills.
Aye.
Trustee Stanton.
Aye.
Trustee Arnett.
Aye.
Mayor McLeod.
Aye.
Motion passed. Item number six, request authorization to waive bidding and purchase three replacement trucks through suburban purchasing cooperative contract from Curry Motors, which is out of Frankfurt, Illinois, in an amount not to exceed $106,112.
So moved.
Second.
And a motion is second, no. Trustee Stanton.
Well, it's not really a question, it's just a statement saying that Curry Motors is making pretty good money off us.
They win the, if they're in the, like, the state, the State of Illinois Purchasing Cooperative or the suburban purchasing cooperative, so there's purchasing cooperatives, and if they get that, you know, if they are the low bidder for that, then a lot of municipalities will be buying all of their vehicles through.
Sure, I mean, that's smart by them.
And their margins are small, though, on the vehicles as compared to what they could be.
Okay.
But...
But they've been doing it for years that way. Seriously, Curry's been doing it for as long as I can remember.
Oh, yeah, as long as I've been on this board.
Yeah.
And then some, sure.
Okay, seeing no other questions, we have a motion is second. May I have a roll call, please?
Trustee Polofis.
Aye.
Chairperson Newell.
Aye.
Vice Chairperson Gata.
Aye.
Trustee Mills.
Aye.
Trustee Stanton.
Aye.
Trustee Arnett.
Aye.
Mayor McLeod.
Aye.
Motion passed. Item number seven, request authorization to request proposals from National Association of Energy Service Companies, which is the N-A-E-S-C-O, certified firms for the development of an energy performance contract consisting of comprehensive energy and water management-related services.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion is second, and who can fill us in on that one?
This is to introduce the concept of performance contracting. I don't, I'm not aware that we've ever done a performance contract before here with the village. It's possible that we may have some time ago. It's a, kind of a new agreement that some municipalities and government agencies are looking at to be able to get larger capital items done if it, if the energy savings or the or the cost will pay for the project. That's what we're looking at here. There's a number of surrounding municipalities that are able to get some large capital projects done at not necessarily a money-neutral position where the cost or the money that's saved or the money that's gained pays for the project. The, we outlined a few projects that we believe have some potential. One of them is water meters. There's a, we have a feeling, we have a high percentage of, not necessarily a high percentage, but a percentage loss in metering in some of the meters in the village, so we want to take a look at that. An AMI system, which is a system that will read the meters automatically from antennas that are placed on top of the water towers and other locations throughout the village. It's a much more efficient way to read the meters. You can essentially read them every day if you want. You can read the meter amount that we got from Jawa that day, and then you can read the meter that we, that went through everybody's meter that day at the same time, and you can compare the two and see if you have a significant water loss or not. So, right now, our operators are able to see when we do have a large-scale break, but sometimes it might take a few days of a trend going up as far as our pumpage goes. This would hopefully be able to tell us a lot faster. One instance, another, we do right now drive by, so we have to drive up and down every street in Hoffman to read the meters through one of our vehicles. This would eliminate the need for that. And then every, every time there's a real estate closing or a final out in the village, a representative has to drive out there and get a reading off the meter to close out that account and start the next account that if somebody's going to move in. So, those will all be able to be able to be done without sending someone out and back. The last thing that we're looking at is something we've been looking at for a while, it's LED streetlights. We want to see what the companies can offer us as far as cost savings go. We know that there's cost savings that can be gained. We also know there's other projects available through COMED, through the Metropolitan Mayor's Caucus, some other organizations that we're also going to take a look at and see which one fits best for the village. By going out for this RFP, we're just basically asking the companies, hey, tell us what you can do for us. Tell us what it might cost, and tell us what the return on investment might be. And then we'll select a company, they'll actually come in and they'll do some very in-depth audit procedures. They'll poll meters. They'll test them through a third-party vendor. They'll figure out what our COMED rates are for street lighting. They'll figure out how many we have, how many are eligible, how many are high-pressure sodium versus metal halite, what those differences are. They'll be able to come back and provide a package to the village that says, these are the projects that make sense, this is how much money you can save. We still are under no obligation at that time to commit to anything. We can still say, okay, thanks, but it's, you know, there's not enough meat on the bone for us, or we don't, you know, we don't want to go that direction. It doesn't obligate us anything to send the RFP out and select a firm, so we were kind of introducing it. We want to send the RFP out, see what comes back. We'll probably interview the companies that propose. And then, if we have a recommendation to select one, we would come back to the Public Works Committee at that time and make that recommendation. But again, even after we make that recommendation and select a company, that doesn't obligate us to anything at that point.
Any questions up here?
Sorry.
That was a good explanation, thank you. All right, so we have a motion is second. May I have a roll call, please?
Trustee Polofis.
Aye.
Chairperson Newell.
Aye.
Vice Chairperson Gata.
Aye.
Trustee Mills.
Aye.
Trustee Stanton.
Aye.
Trustee Arnett.
Aye.
Mayor McLeod.
Aye.
Motion passed. Item number eight is request acceptance of the Department of Public Works monthly report.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion is second. Do we have anything to add?
Trustee Mills, can I add something? I'm Trustee Mills, Trustee Newell. Sorry, I'd just like to thank Aaron Howe, the management analyst in Public Works. He has done a majority of the research on this performance contracting item, and thank you, Aaron. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Trustee Mills?
I have two questions for you, I think for Public Works. And the one, it's the Jawa Water Tower over on Higgins. They've got one of them all tented in, are they painting that finally?
Yep, yep.
Okay.
I'm glad, because I'll stop getting the questions. Everybody thinks those are our towers.
That's why I thought I'd just mention it was Jawa's.
Yes.
Second thing, there's a tree, a parkway tree on Governor's Lane just south of Williamsburg. It looks like it's been damaged by a vehicle. I'm wondering if when Nikor was doing dig-up work over there, they skinned it or something, because it looks like all the bark's off the one, in the one spot.
Just south of what street?
Just south of Williamsburg, going towards McDonald's. And I noticed it the other day, and I know Nikor was just, or their contractor was just there.
Okay, it could be, it could be, well, it could be a vehicle. We had a car take two, we had two incidents with streetlights over the weekend, two streetlights.
This is from like, at least last week or so, so.
Well, I'm not saying it was this weekend, but it could have been a car that...
Exactly, but I figured just, if someone could take a look at it, I'd appreciate it.
We will take a look.
That's it, thank you.
Okay, seeing no other questions or anything, we have a motion is second. May I have a roll call, please?
Trustee Polofis.
Aye.
Chairperson Newell.
Aye.
Vice Chairperson Gata.
Aye.
Trustee Mills.
Aye.
Trustee Stanton.
Aye.
Trustee Arnett.
Aye.
Mayor McLeod.
Aye.
Motion passed. And the last one is nine, which is request acceptance of the Department of Development Services monthly engineering report of the Transportation and Engineering Division.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion is second. Do we have anything to add?
Nothing to add.
Okay, no questions. May I have a roll call, please?
Trustee Polofis.
Aye.
Chairperson Newell. Vice Chairperson Gata.
Aye.
Trustee Mills.
Aye.
Trustee Stanton.
Aye.
Trustee Arnett.
Aye.
Mayor McLeod.
Aye.
Motion passed. Anything for president's request?
Nothing else, Chairperson Newell.
Okay, thank you. Nothing under other items in review, who may have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
A motion is second. May I have a roll call, please?
Trustee Polofis.
Aye.
Chairperson Newell.
Aye.
Vice Chairperson Gata.
Aye.
Trustee Mills.
Aye.
Trustee Stanton.
Aye.
Trustee Arnett.
Aye.
Mayor McLeod.
Aye.
We are adjourned, thank you.
Go ahead and call the Special General Administration and Personnel Committee for the Village of Hoffman Estates for April 23rd, 2018, sorry. Can I have a roll call, please?
Chairman Arnett.
Present.
Vice Chairman Mills.
Present.
Trustee Stanton.
Present.
Trustee Newell.
Present.
Trustee Polofis.
Present.
Trustee Gata.
Present.
Mayor McLeod.
Present.
Thank you, we do have a roll call. We have one new business, item number one, discussion regarding the website design. Does staff have anything to add?
Yes, indeed we do. I want to thank you for the opportunity to show you this tonight. We came before this committee in November of 2017, and you gave us permission to go ahead and move forward with Vision, which is our current provider, on a redesign of our village website. At that time, you helped us choose the template and requested some features that you wanted staff to look into, including on the new site. So, staff has been working over the past few months with Vision to refine that. There's been a committee, kind of, an ad hoc committee brought together of staff folks since I was out on leave, so I'd like to thank those people. Dan O'Malley was the lead on that, Jennifer Georgievic, and, let's see, who else, Parth Joshi and Ryan Johnson were helping out quite a bit with that. So, at this point, we are interested in hearing your takeaways and your thoughts on how the website looks at this point. Just something to keep in mind is that all of this is still able to be edited and changed, so to the extent that the committee has questions or changes that you'd recommend, that we can go forward and talk to Vision about that and have them look into making those changes. I'd like to just take you through some kind of high-level overview of the new site. Here, we worked with Vision to make this logo as large as possible. You'll notice that as you scroll down, the header resizes. It's nice. This menu up here has been, we took out a number of items and worked very hard to make these items more viewable, more visible, larger. This is the Google Translate function that we wanted to get. You can see, there's a long, long, long list of all of these languages that you can translate the whole site into, and it's automatic. So, say you wanted to read it in Armenian, it automatically changes everything into Armenian for you, and that would extend to every page of the website. Back to English now, so we know what we're looking at. This is going to be our search bar, which will be, there's a proprietary search tool that's going to be a lot more effective moving forward, but that's not up and running yet. This is all just a, just a sort of a skeleton view of what the website's going to be. These are the current headers that we have. This is our new mega-menu that we chose to add. So, this is all taken from our current website, the way that it is right now. All of this can be edited by staff to the extent that we want to make more items more viewable, and we're going to look through and just make sure that we have all the right items there so that it's as easy as possible for end-users. One of the things that the committee had asked for was to make sure that things don't move around a whole lot from our current website because we want people to, who are familiar with the website and know where things are, to be able to continue to access things where they expect them to be. So, at this point, it's exactly the same as it was. These pictures, I think, are lovely, but they're also customizable, so don't focus too much at this point on the pictures because we can change them, when we can change them seasonally, we can do a lot of different things with them on an ongoing basis. Here are our buttons. See that the color changes as you go through. We tried to stay within the village's current branding, so that's why we chose the colors that we chose, which match the village logo. These items, looking at our Google Analytics, these were our most popular pages at this point. Again, these are pages that can change at any point, that we'd be interested in doing that. This is our new calendar here, which obviously shows the whole month rather than just a few items, but we did want to be able to maintain this upcoming events so that it's easy for people to see what's happening on a particular day. You'll notice that the dates where there's an event are underlined on the calendar, so people are, can easily see which dates things are happening, and then when you click through, you go to the item, just similar to how you would on our current calendar. These are our news items, similar to what we have now, but just it looks a lot more updated, and we can choose to include pictures, but we wanted to give you an example with or without, so we can decide what we think's best. And down here, we have our social media links, so that people can find us on any venue they want, so. That's what we have so far, so to the extent you have questions, I'd love to hear them.
I have one quick question. Is, for the calendar, is it possible to highlight the square where there's something in there instead of underlining it?
We can certainly ask them.
I don't know if that would be more visible to people who are actually on the website.
The way that we have it now, it looks like it highlights the current date.
Right.
Rather than, so I mean, it would look a little bit like a checkerboard. If that's, we can certainly ask them to follow up on that one.
I did go on it today, and I was able to function through it pretty well.
Yeah.
Anybody else have any questions or anything they want to add? Trustee Polofis?
Joe, man.
Okay. Okay. Or a motion to go ahead and proceed with?
We wanted your input, we have it, we'll continue.
Okay. Thank you.
So, just in terms of next steps, if that's what you're interested in, once we go back to Vision, we can ask them that question, we'll follow up, and I'll let you know what they say on the color question. But then they can begin sort of to migrate all of our data then into our new template, and then we can get some dates on the calendar for training for staff and start to move forward.
Okay, and if it's easier just to do the lines, that's fine, too. Trustee Mills?
So, you'll be able, staff will be able to do all the updating right in-house, then?
Absolutely, yes. And there will be a period of time after they migrate the data in where we can go in and we'll do, you know, a lot of quality control checking and just make sure that everything is the way that we want it to look. And, you know, we can at that point circulate a link to you as well, to see if there's anything that the committee and the board would like to see changed.
So, looks good.
Thank you.
Looks very nice, thank you. Thank you for all of your work, everybody. Anything else? No?
I just want to say I like those little reminders on the side because those are like really, really current, like with the garden plot I drove past. By the way, they look very, very nice. Everybody's ready for their plots. They've been asking for my work in other places. And that group bill alert is a good thing to have there, because that was a big confusion. So, that was nice, that it's right there, it pops on you, so, good job so far. Thank you.
Anybody else? Okay, if I can have a motion for an adjournment?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, may I have a roll call, please?
Trustee Polofis.
Aye.
Chairman Arnett.
Aye.
Vice Chairman Mills.
Aye.
Trustee Stanton.
Aye.
Trustee Newell.
Aye.
Trustee Gata.
Aye.
Mayor McLeod.
Aye.
Here we are, adjourned.